It's 6:30 and I'm calling this meeting to order. We are starting with agenda additions and deletions, none at this time. We are going to start with the minutes from our last meeting, so the four minutes of June 16th, Do we have a motion?
I would move to approve minutes.
A second.
Okay. Please look them over, see if you notice anything.
I've looked them.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Road Commissioner report.
Oh, sorry, get pay orders, thank you.
Saved by the bell.
Is this the amount of pay orders?
Yeah, there's a new one on your, yep. And then, so we're gonna do pay orders and then Julie has her report before we do the June 30th pay order.
So I have the profit and loss.
Pay orders are out there as well, look to your left.
So this must be the pay order?
That's it.
This is it, great. And the amount is for?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to pay.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Was the second, there was a number missing for that finesse hang, is that what's different in this version from what you sent out in the packet?
What was, what did you add on this one?
Julie added the fireworks.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
See fireworks.
So that's about the five thousand dollar difference.
Okay.
Okay. Cause I guess there's a, there's a line item for the school street sidewalk planning grant that was, looked like there was a, or that's, that's six-nine, six-one ninety-six that wasn't on the original one? On the second page.
Sixty-nine sixty-one?
Yeah, that wasn't on the one, so that's, that's what I was asking about. That number was, was blank on the one that was sent out with the packet. I didn't know if, and that's fine, I just didn't know if there was something we needed to know.
Do we have any information on that, the sidewalk planning grant? I have it on the other one.
I have it on the old one.
Yes.
It's on the other one.
All right, come on.
Okay.
It's missing online, I don't know why, this is some being way, way printed.
Okay.
All right, never mind.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now Julie has her report before we go into the six-thirty pay order.
So I have the third one on there, June 30th, year end statement. Three pages, the financials. So right now, as of June 30th, our net income, we have a surplus of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven twenty-six, uh, twenty. So that's what we have in the general account. I don't know how much detail you want me to go in.
Well, that was a general fund.
What's that? Yeah.
Could you say that again, Julie?
So right now, we have a surplus at year end, which is a good thing. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven twenty-six seventy, or twenty. That's in the general checking account.
Okay. What's that, the line item four-five-six-three miscellaneous at the end of the income?
Okay, so the highlights under income, if you go along the first Green Mountain Forest payment in lieu of taxes, they sent us fifty-one hundred over what we budgeted. From V-Trans, we got twenty-three thousand, five hundred over what we budgeted. That was a one-time extra amount that they gave all the towns. Other notable items under forty-five twenty-six, the Wollingford taxes, we brought in fifty-seven thousand, three hundred over what we budgeted.
Well done, Jill.
Going under insurance reimbursements, forty-five sixty-one. I don't know if it's really, uh, something to point out, but fourteen thousand, seven hundred of that is for the, uh, the truck that was damaged, so that's what that is. The rest of that is for the insurance payment. That we got for the boy in the boot, which we're gonna take out and put into a reserve account. Uh, and then forty-five sixty-two, a FEMA reimbursement, seventy-two thousand. So, under miscellaneous, so under that is, uh, these are, the majority of it is transfers that I've done. So, the building fund, I, eleven thousand, one twenty-six, I had to take it out of the CD and put it into this account, put it onto the income account. And that's gonna offset, you'll see it on page three where the building, under capital expenses, we went over building, our building budget for the heat pumps by eleven thousand, one twenty-six, so that offsets that. And then the reappraisal, I took money out of the CD of over sixty-seven thousand, so if you look at account number, on the first page, five zero zero two F, reappraisal expenses.
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, we had to, uh, we went over by sixty-four thousand, eight twenty-seven, forty-eight, so I had to offset that. Uh, RFA, or the asset fund, on page two, if you look under fifty-one sixty-one, Wollingford asset fund expenses, I took that out of that, see, you know, the check, the account we have, I had to offset those that we paid out this year. Cause those were paid out of the general fund, so I have to offset that. And then, uh, we had to pay for that truck that we bought, the eighty-seven nine seventy-five, and I had to take that out of the highway fund. So those are just internal transfers. So, that's what those mostly are. The rest of the income is, uh, we got some money for honey sales during the year, uh, we got some of that national opioid settlement money, not a lot, couple return check fees. And then, under expenses, we were under budget, uh, under administration, we are under budget, uh, let's see, well, if you back out the reappraisal, because we had to fund that from our town administration, we're almost sixteen thousand under budget. And under town government, we're almost ninety-five hundred, if you back out the Wollingford asset So we did well there, appropriations is pretty even, the highway, we have to back out the Volvo truck purchase, so they're actually under budget. Public safety, they were under budget with the special officer contract, cause they're always a month behind, so. So what we paid in July is actually on the June contract. Capital, uh, we did a transfer of eleven thousand, so that's gonna be an even budget of eighty thousand, eight fifty, so that's even. And recreation, they were like twenty-six hundred dollars under budget, so right now, we're at two forty-eight, seven twenty-six, forty. And if I can explain what's on the June 30th pay order, uh, the first line item is, uh, twenty-six seventy ninety, and that is to transfer the monies that we collect for recording fees. We can take four dollars for each recording fee and put it towards our restoration fund account, and that's what we earned for the year, minus what we spent. And then the second line is six thousand, one fifteen, those were donations we received for the, the boy with the boot. So, the voters approved, opening up a reserve account for that. The third item is for the communications group income. They have four hundred and ten dollars left in donations that they did not use. The voters approved, opening a reserve account for those monies. The next one is for Wollingford Day income, and the voters approved that, and they have five thousand, one eighty-nine ten to transfer, which probably is gonna be spent, some of that, most of it's probably spent on your July eighth pay order for, five thousand was for the fireworks, so I'm not sure about, we'll actually go into that account. I know they're still waiting on the donation from Mrs. Kaminski for five thousand. The next one is the state reappraisal, annual payment. Every year, the state gives us, uh, over ten thousand dollars, and that's to be used for the reappraisal, so we need to take that money out of the general fund and put it in that account that we have for that. The next item is the eighty-seven twenty-five, that's for the, what the VLCT paid us for the insurance claim for the boy. That needs to go into that reserve account. We have a bill from Ferguson Water Works for culverts, there's no money was spent yet for culverts, so I was given that to be paid for June 30th. And then the last item is a check to be issued to Pike Industries for the sand, was it the sand and?
Gravel.
Gravel budget, what was left. We approved that, what wasn't spent on those two budgets, to be used towards the paving projects in fiscal year twenty-six. So that's what that totals. So, the pay order for June 30th is one hundred and seven thousand, eight sixty-four, forty-nine. So if you subtract those expenses from what we have as of June 30th, we will have a year end profit of one hundred and forty thousand, eight sixty-one, seventy-one, which would be offset the tax amount that we have to raise when we go to figure out taxes next month.
And does that go into the general fund? So on the investment report, does that one forty go into this general fund account of seventy-five thousand?
It is in the general fund now.
It's in it now, okay.
Some's in the sweep account, you know, anything over seventy-five thousand goes in the sweep account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There we go. Any other questions for Julie? Julie, thank you very much.
So you'll need to approve this pay order, if you agree with it.
So I think we need a motion?
Do we already have a motion to pay him?
This is a different pay order.
Yes, the June 30th, the June 30th pay order.
It's this one, this is a separate pay order.
I'll move to go ahead and pay the June 30th pay orders.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Julie.
Road Commissioner report.
Not a lot as hell, they're working in Sugar Hill, been doing some ditching, road cleaning, Moranville, um, Old Farm Way, couple other roads up in there. I haven't talked to Steve this week, I know they're, they put the truck on the road this week, so. They weren't running it, cause they thought they needed the title, and actually, title went to, uh, Mount Peler.
So is this the new, the new used one?
Used one, yes. And that in turn will come back to the town when they get done with their paperwork.
And so is the old one now in the hands of?
They, they have it over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gone. So. Um, the culvert, we're gonna talk about that.
Yep. You can talk about that now if you want. The Cook, Cook Drive?
No, Seneca Way.
Oh, Seneca Way, okay, yep.
Culvert on Seneca Way, we got a grant for twenty thousand dollars. After we had the grant awarded, we got the water survey, and they actually just, as far as I'm concerned, went crazy on it. We're taking out a thirty, two footer, a thirty inch culvert, and they want us to put in a nine foot square box culvert. The culvert alone, I hadn't actually priced one, cause I'm not even gonna go there with it, but the equivalent galvanizes around fifty or sixty thousand, a box culvert's probably gonna be upwards of seventy-five, just to buy the culvert.
Where was, where was?
Seneca Way, there's one, Seneca Way, there's one house on it. So, I talked to the state about transferring the grant to another culvert project that was a little more feasible and cost efficient for the town, and they can't do that.
They can't do that.
They, when it's awarded, it's awarded for that and that only. I said, well, they didn't do the water survey till after we got it. So that's, when they send, you send these grants out, you tell them you need a water survey, they say they'll do it, but they don't get it done for you right off. And the grant still has a deadline date, so you have to go with what you have.
There's no like appeal process to their evaluation of that?
No, you could, I guess he could say, if you put it under structural culvert, and, you know, possibly get sixty to a hundred thousand on it, but does the town really wanna spend that kind of money on that road? When we have dozens of culverts on major roads in town that need replacing.
Right. So what's the alternative, then?
Give the money back.
Just give the money back.
I don't know of any other way to do it.
Well, we haven't, we haven't received it yet, so we just would notify them that we're gonna turn.
It doesn't hurt our credit or anything like he said, it's just, you can apply for something next year.
Yeah, so that, was it reapply for a different grant? So that would be for next year, like a larger amount to then actually get a grant to do what they think needs to be done?
If you're gonna proceed with that project.
Oh, no, we won't, that's, that's way over.
Yeah, we're not even entertaining that.
We're talking seventy-five grand for a culvert, that's not even installing it. When you're doing a culvert of that magnitude, you're gonna have one cranes to set that basis, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollar job for one house. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
So this, what they mentioned here, which is like, um, you could pay for costs above the twenty thousand or reapply for a different grant, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that?
A different grant somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah, would not be reapplying for that grant there. You're not even a structures grant.
So would we, is there, would we just, like, can you repair that?
The culvert that's there is working, it's just, that was one we decided we could upgrade it, cause it washed out during the last storm two summers ago. You know, but presuming we could put a four or five foot culvert in there to reasonably handle water, putting one in, you know, four or five times the size, not twenty-five times the size. Or square footage.
But the state wouldn't pay for that?
No, no, it's when they did this water hydraulic study, that's what you have to go by. So, but I don't, is there anything else on that, Sandy? The one down on?
Yeah, that's what, the question I had is, it's been kinda on the agenda for the culvert to replace it down there.
Cook Drive, yeah.
Cook Drive. I'm just looking for a schedule.
Good luck.
Well, the reason, the reason is, it's a dead-end road.
Yeah.
And there are cars all day, from four o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night, so we're just trying.
We'll have to post that a month ahead, but I'm guessing it's gonna be towards fall.
Okay, that's, you know, we're just. That's what we're just trying to get a, get an idea.
Well, and you know, we'll have to post that out at least a month ahead of time. And I presume we can do half, and then put another stick in on, open that side up and put another stick in on the other side.
And that road is so narrow right there, that, where that culvert is now.
Yeah, but it's a two-piece, it's gonna have to have at least thirty feet, so they should be able to put in one twenty footer, open that back up, so, shouldn't be closed too long.
No, no, it's just, like I said, the schedule in this.
Yeah.
You know, once we drive across Cavendish Lawn, there's no other way here.
No.
There we are.
No, don't need to do that.
No.
How about the crosswalk request?
That's a good question. I don't know very little about those. I presume, because it was a state highway, that was gonna fall into state jurisdiction, but Sandy said it's not.
We can ask them, we can ask them to put one in, we have to apply.
Thought we did.
Well, the town has to do it.
Yeah.
Yes.
They.
They have to approve it, but the town has to do the work.
Town has to put it in.
Right.
Right.
But they have to approve it, that's all.
Right.
And I don't know where we go exactly.
Well, I don't know where we're gonna cough up a hundred thousand dollars, put a crosswalk in there.
Right. It's a sense, I guess, it's not a priority with all the other stuff we have to do?
I, that's, I would wash our hands of it, I don't know how you'd do anything with that. You know, the state's gonna have to do road survey, I presume, they're gonna position it for you, they're gonna give you your approaches, you're gonna have to redo all your curving.
You can't do it to a driveway either, it has to be.
No, you'll have to have those old.
All banks like this.
Access, I don't know how it does, works, I wouldn't even.
And Sandy, you're saying if we, if we wanted a grant, we, the deadline for the grant for this year is like, like in a couple of days from now, so we would need to.
The deadline's in four days, right. So Ethan, Ethan Peppin from Rutland Regional said, you know, he could work on, work with the town on a grant for this project, maybe next year at the same time, but also look at all of seven, not just rush it in for one crosswalk. Maybe see where else crosswalks could go and do it all at once. But, you know, it could become a, you know, school street sidewalk grant too.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you're gonna, it's gonna be another scenario like school street.
And it's, I, it's a fifty-fifty too, I think.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Did Mr. Burke approach DPW or you?
He approached, he approached V-Trans first, and they said for the, that the, the request had to come from the town, which you folks did. You signed a letter a month or so ago saying, yeah, go ahead and put it in, and then they said, we'll have to look at it further, but you would have to do the work, so. It came in, the information came in stages.
So we don't know why Mr. Burke felt that a crosswalk was needed there?
Well, I think, I think he thought that from where he wanted it, for those folks to come all the way back here is the only way to, there's a crosswalk, it was kind of a, a little ways to go, it'd just be.
Oh, yeah.
Easier for the residents there to cross farther up the road and come back here. And he's right, and we've had other requests, like from northern, the north of the village, but also south of the village too, so maybe a study of the whole, but you know, it's, they're all expensive.
Yes.
Okay, so nothing's happening on that until, at best, next year?
If you wanna pursue the.
Yes, if you wanna pursue it.
Is that something you folks wanna pursue, or give some thought and discuss that and?
Maybe readdress it?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Will we bring it up like, at a later time?
Okay.
And see where we are.
It doesn't, like, with everything on our plate for.
Yeah.
Those kind of projects, it seems like it's not the top priority.
Okay. And now, um, Pike sand bid, we have it in our packets.
It's just the price he gives every year, he goes out, he asks if we're gonna buy any sand, and this would be the price if we bought it for more than, you know, a few yards or tons.
So is this something we need a motion on?
Yeah, we, we have their. Don't care if you wanna sign up.
We can do it by consensus. We can do it by consensus?
If everybody agrees. Phil, you said, tell them what you said about the, who, who, is there an option to go anyplace else?
Well, we, we do use SLCs or Wollingford crushed stones material too, we mix it, the stone in with it, so it's not like we don't use his stuff either. But, his stone is white, kinda spreading white stone on snow or ice, sometimes gives a false pretense, cause you don't see it. So we mix it with a little brown, with some stone in it. Cause his, Pike's is green material, Wollingford crushed stone is a fractured material, which grips much better. So we mix it, and that's how we get our road material.
So are we good with the, um, the quote from Pike? Okay, good with this? Okay. And so this will be for us to sign at the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Let me see where I put it. Here we are. Okay. Anything else for?
Nope, I'm all set. Be later, I'll talk to you.
Thank you, Phil. Do we want to say anything, hold, just one second?
Yeah.
Do we wanna say anything about the site visit that we just went on? Do we have any questions that came up that we'd like answered? I know Phil came up with a question that we're gonna be checking with the state on about what would happen if we?
Yeah, I guess like, what's the next step there?
Oh, on, down on Tiff Road?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, we were talking on the way home, and I, I think that we need to find out what the state's gonna do to us, or want from us, I should say, whether they're gonna throw that up to a class four town road, make it a trail, which in turn will eliminate closing that off and making a turnaround for him, because it's gonna be a trail.
How can they turn it into a class four?
I don't know, Sandy says they have the right to.
The state, the state has, the town can repair the road?
Yeah.
The town can reclassify as a trail, or the town can throw.
We can relocate the road.
Or the town can throw the road up. I only said that if the town opts to throw the road up, which means the landowners on each side split the length of the road, and it becomes their property, if that was your option, the state has kind of the first refusal to then keep that as a trail. So you would have to go through the state before you throw it up.
So they would have to do that when we decided that we were gonna.
If we decide.
If we decide.
If we wanted to.
My theory was it would be one answer to get in our pocket, find out what they're gonna say if we have to close it. And it makes it so we can't do a partial roadway up to do his access into his land. You know, I just, they could stop the whole thing, cause if they throw it up as a trail, it's not a road, it's a trail.
We have to throw it up though.
Right.
And they say, it's a trail, but we would have to do it.
But they also have override our saying.
Yes.
So if we, if we threw it up as a class four road.
They can condemn it down here, Sandy?
No, they can't condemn it, but they can say, if we decide to throw it up.
Yes.
It's, they can say, we can say, we're gonna leave this section of road alone, so he has access to his property, and the state could come in and say, no.
Okay.
Another reason why we shouldn't do it.
That's, that's what I was gonna add.
Yeah, out of my hands, I'm just giving you information.
And what other questions do people have about, from our site visit, for questions to be answered?
First, I appreciated the number of people who came out, it was great, it was lively conversation. A vast majority, I didn't see a single hand go up saying, don't, keep the road open.
The one person who said to keep the road open is somebody who does not live on that road, somebody who travels on that road.
Oh.
And wants to see that road, because it's always been a road, and wants it to see a road again.
And for fire access, one guy said fire access. Rescue and fire.
We're obliged to take care of our roads for the safety and well-being of the people who live here. We're obliged, this is our job, this is the job we do, we spend the most money on, transfer station, but our, our job is the roads. And we do it for the well-being and safety of the community. And if we throw up that road, and no emergency vehicles can go up there to those two houses, there's two houses now, but a hundred years, there're gonna be more and more houses. And if we throw that. but a hundred years, there're gonna be more and more houses, and if we throw that road up and the fire trucks can't get there, that's a mistake. And that's why I got on the board, so we don't make mistakes. It'd be a mistake.
I mean, they can get up there through, through the, coming up to the top.
What?
They can get to stop.
Yeah, that, that's, uh.
Seven minutes difference.
Seven minutes, uh, and a fire truck's gonna take longer. And what we're doing to throw that road up is we're, we're taking the health and safety of those two properties away, and we can't do that. We have to, we have to maintain all of our class three highways the same.
I just have to go with what Ann mentioned, that everyone who lives on the road would rather have that road closed. And they're, and also they're common, that ninety-five percent of the traffic on the road is not them.
It's the last.
Other, it's used as a through road.
Yeah.
And it becomes.
It should be.
It becomes, well, that road is a two-way, one-way, and it's, there's many accidents on that road. I just think we need to think through all the options on it.
I also question the premise that because there's a road there, that the select board is obliged to keep a road there no matter what. Because I think with increasing storms, more trees are gonna come down on that road, more holes are gonna be made.
All the roads do that, all of them.
Mr. Barker, we could invest a great deal of money into the solution that Mr. Baker described, and next year have to do it all over again.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be.
There are provisions in state and municipal law for discontinuing the use of a road, and that's what we're doing. We're considering that.
Yeah, I shouldn't, I don't think we should be. I think we should just fix it.
Maybe another thing we need to know, Phil, is if we were to repair it, what, what we, what we would be looking at on the cost of repairing that road? Can we get an estimate?
Yeah, we can get a rough estimate. But now, like some of the other people said, are you talking the section that's.
Right.
Where it's broke, I wanna say broke, washed away, or are you gonna talk the whole road like these other guys are? You know, this, and that's where you, as a board, has to make that decision. What section you wanna repair.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, the road's really not that bad.
Roads? Never, that road's better now than it was forty years ago, I can tell you that.
But I think it would be good to get.
It's not better every year.
But I think it would be good to get a ballpark on, on what we talked about, rerouting it.
Yeah.
You know, to go around that washout, just so we have some information to work with.
And also what the cost is to, I don't know, to put a guard rail or do something on that side that is all washed out.
Correct.
What are we, what are we gonna do about that side?
Those trees right there. The trees, we knock down and put them away.
I think it'd be wise to spend money, put some Jersey barriers up there.
I don't know how comfortable I felt, just looking at that road and seeing that what was holding it up was a tree trunk.
That's what's on the banner. Years of that, worked well. That was a low-budget guard rail thirty-five years ago.
Okay, so now, we've talked about.
That's something that should be like a, it seems like maybe that should be a, an agenda item for us to really hash it out.
For our next.
Yeah, well, once we get the, for the next meeting.
So what, why don't you scope out what that would be, and then once you have the information, we can make an agenda item?
In August.
In August.
Okay.
Sound good, everybody?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Davenport?
Before Phil left, yes, I just had, I'm not here with cookies, so I don't want money. The other topic that I'm usually here for.
E Street?
Is E Street. Um, you guys went through a couple of years ago with Mulching Head, did a great job, pushed it all back. Uh, the tree warden came through, cut some of the overhanging trees, so my equipment's not hitting them all the time. My concern or question is, what's the deal with roadside mowing? Because we went, you went through two years ago with the Mulching Head, uh, which worked well, but you cut those stumps off. They're now all growing back up with brush, and they're all six feet tall and start to hang into the road. So, you know, where are we with roadside?
We haven't talked about roadside mowing at all.
Do you have a tractor with a cutter bar?
I do have a tractor.
Would you like to, roadside mowing?
Not for the town. Uh, well, no, actually, I sent you a bill two, three years ago, and I was told that they wouldn't pay it because I, uh, was not, it was not, uh, how was it? It was not authorized by the town.
Well, we can, we can authorize it.
Anyway, I, I'm just wondering where we stand with roadside mowing.
I'm wondering too.
I haven't even talked about it. We haven't looked into it at all this year. That's the first question on roadside mowing. Are there, what, I need, he's in.
I knew it was coming.
With the mowing, I know.
So can we look into roadside mowing?
We can. I'll see what's out there for mowers. I'm not doing it this year.
Okay.
I'm just.
Your, your tractor never got fixed?
No, it's fixed, but I'm just way too busy.
Okay.
Okay, so we will be looking into roadside mowing?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. We are moving on to honorable mentions. Um, special thanks go to Sandra Hopebird for reporting ballfield vandalism to the town, Jill and Walter Steer for recovering the vandalism videos, and Larry Sharon for retrieving the top of the picnic table thrown under the bridge. David Cornwell for repairing signage at Ulford Lake Public Beach, Brenda and Dick Kendall for their decades of cleaning West Hill Road and recovering the entering Wallingford sign. And Sandy, do you want me to mention the water down at the ballfield?
Yeah.
Todd Galliano and Wallingford Day for donating money to fix the water that was vandalized at the ballfield. They put, uh, a new handle was put on, um, it is now locked, and the shut-off is, will be turned on for Wallingford Day and then turned off again, right after Wallingford Day is over. And Wallingford Day's covering the cost of that repair. So thank you, thank you to Wallingford Day and Todd Galliano. Our mentions are done, we're on to public comments. Do we have public comments this evening?
I'll offer one public comment, I may, and perhaps I speak in grotesque ignorance, that's usually the case. But I think the idea of spending huge amounts of money, whether it's our money or state money, on building a bunch of crosswalks on seven is crazy. There's a crosswalk at the intersection, the traffic level on seven makes it feasible for most people anyway, to feasibly wait and safely cross seven, whether it's the north side or the south side of the intersection, and to spend fifty, a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, that's just.
But it's gonna be expensive.
That's, that's, um, I think that's a misuse of public resources.
Thank you for your opinion.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Okay, we're moving on. To revised animal control ordinance, work farm dog guest, John Blumer.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Been a while since I've been to a Wallingford Select Board meeting. Just, just to give you a little background, uh, I guess the last meeting, last meeting, you passed a dog ordinance, revised dog ordinance, kind of aside, posted online, talked to Sandy after a few questions about it, talked to the animal control officer, so some of the questions were answered, even though I asked to sort of be on the, the, the agenda. I do have a couple of small comments, one on the ordinance itself that you may wanna consider, uh, with potential comment, and I wanna kind of address quickly a couple of little issues. The one, the one that I, I do see where you made a major change, back track, it looks like you took the Vermont League of Cities and Towns template, moved it over for the most part, changed the fees and expenses and stuff, sort of for violations, which kind of makes sense, and you're using a template. The, uh, there is in that template a barking dog timeframe, and I think you all decided to do sixty minutes, which generally may seem like it's okay. I mean, the old statute had reasonable, in reasonable, reasonableness, and the reason the sixty, the sixty minutes you may wanna reconsider at some point is, it makes a difference with time of day. You know, at, at a three o'clock in the afternoon, an hour may make sense, if you have a young child sleeping in the summer, down here in town on Ho Avenue, and the neighbor leaves a dog out for an hour, that may or may not be as conducive or as reasonable. So it looks like you filled in a time period of sixty minutes. I don't really know what, if there is a, that, that form comes from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I just think that that hour is reasonable under some circumstances, and it may not be under others, but.
Do you mind telling me where in the ordinance the sixty minutes is?
Yeah. It appears. It appears it's in the section four-two-oh-four, nuisance animals, A, prohibitions, five, disturbing the peace, it's page, uh, page three?
Yes, nuisance animals.
And so, and your older statute had it down, let me see if I can find that for you.
A, B? A, A five.
A five.
It's your own one.
Yes.
And that, they basically talked about unreasonable barking or howling, and, and the reason, I think the old statute had it there was what's reasonable and what's not reasonable, kind of depends on the circumstances.
And what did the old statute send to word in the old statute?
I'm sorry. It was, uh, forty-two-oh-seven, barking prohibited, it shall be unlawful for any owner of a dog to permit it to disturb the quiet of a person by unreasonable barking or howling. Now that, unfortunately, lots of people try to avoid that 'cause that's a lawyer's paradise, trying to figure out what's reasonable or unreasonable. So I understand the time limit, but I, the sixty days, sixty minutes is going to be reasonable under some circumstances, and less than reasonable during the time of day. And I don't, I, it would be nice if you reconsider it, but I'm not really sure the exact correct answer, because I think it does make a difference on the, the time of day.
So are you thinking that we maybe put in, would your suggestion be to include like a time of day part in that?
It would either be back to the reasonable or something to do with time of day.
I just feel that unreasonable is just too.
I understand.
Yes.
But, but so, but I think it makes a difference as to what time of day occurs, obviously. So that would be sort of the suggestion there. I'm not, you know, it's, it's, generally speaking, statute's fine, I guess, I'm not sure I love every part of it, I'm not sure I hate every part of it. It at least allows us to define sort of what's out there. Uh, there have been, there's a few provisions that, um, when I spoke with the animal control officers to how they were planning to be interpreted, we may have to kind of find out how it's interpreted. You know, the major, and I under the agenda has working dogs, there's a definition of working dogs. I have what I believe that, like we trained or particularly bred, whether or not there's dogs that do that or don't do that. Um, I don't think it gets you a get out of jail free card just because you were potentially bred, and I also think you have to go and, and be working as a dog, not wandering around other people's land, or barking at cars, or barking at people on, on their front porch. But that will maybe be for another day to kind of work through that, but I, I did wanna get back to you on what's, what I thought potentially could be an issue on the time.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Did you contact the animal control, and how did that work out?
I'm joking.
Joe was really, so, not that he's gonna stand here, he kind of explained to me, uh, we talked about the statute, and once again, there's parts of it I don't like, but that's okay. There's parts of it I like, uh, we discussed sort of that it needs to be sort of enforced. And, and from my perspective, it's really what qualifies as a working dog, and is the dog working versus not working. And we may, we may have to experiment and find out where that takes us, but.
So you investigated that?
I already have, yes.
Yeah, and, and what's your conclusion?
I don't need to sit down with Sandy, but this is only the first case I ever ran across where that statute was used and a working dog permit was issued.
Right, right.
I don't think in the old ordinances anything existed as far as a need for training such animal, and I think that's the issue. Just because it's a sheepdog, or in this case, a, oh, forget what it was now, uh, Great Pyrenees, doesn't automatically mean it's a working farm dog. If in fact, he's doing all of it protecting his herd, he's out chasing cows, he's barking at other people, so that needs to be defined a little bit better than what it is right now. Not only in my discretion of going out there and doing your business, but even issuing those licenses in the future. But we're working on it, it's okay. Have to touch base with Sandy on that one.
So you satisfied with that for a good?
I, I'm thinking we're making progress.
We've got a couple of comments.
Can people identify themselves when you speak, just for the record?
Please identify yourself when you speak.
I'd like to identify myself. I'm Chris Ricchio, and I would like to make a comment on the Great Pyrenees that they are actually referring to. Uh, we purchased a Great Pyrenees from a Great Pyrenees breeder, uh, eight years ago, uh, to watch our livestock. And they are bred for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to watch livestock. That's how, that's what they do. You can't stop them from doing it if you try. They don't make great pets, I'll tell you that. So, 'cause they don't listen. Um, our dog is watching, listening, and smelling for invaders all day long. That's all he does. Now, his idea of an invader might be different than mine. For example, a couple of weeks ago, he saw a snapping turtle in the pasture, and he went nuts. He was circling it, barking, 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 you know, it was an invader. So I had to put him in the house, let the turtle go, let him sway, and then I put him back outside. He hears and sees things that I don't, um, often, and he barks, that's how they identify that something's up, they bark. Now, we don't utilize him completely as a guardian dog, because to do that would mean leaving him out all night, 'cause that is when he would be the most valuable to us, is at nighttime when the coyotes are out. But because we have neighbors, we don't do that out of courtesy. We don't want our dog barking at night, for anybody, including ourselves. So we don't use him at night. We put him in nine-ish, ten-ish, depending on the time of the year, it's closer to nine, sometimes eight in the summer, or maybe in the winter, and then we let him out in the morning. And in the, just first thing he does before we put him in is he barks, goes around the property and barks, to let all those creatures, those invaders out there know, don't come over. First thing he does in the morning, same thing, and it's about a ten, fifteen minute routine he has, nine in the morning. All night long, he's quiet, 'cause he's in our house. During the day, if he senses an invader, he'll bark at it. I have, did a little bit of logging about his barking, and it averages about fifteen minutes a day during the daytime hours. It would never come close to the sixty minute thing you guys were just talking about, never, as he barks for sixty minutes. And I just think he does a great job. I would love to use him at night, but we don't. But I would like to reserve the right to, if necessary. Last year, we had a horrible coyote problem, we lost a couple of sheep, um, because we had him in when the coyotes came. So what we did is I sent an email to the neighbors, letting them know that we are gonna let him out if we hear the coyotes. And we did, they came, they surrounded our pasture with our baby calves, with breed cattle, and, uh, so we let him out, and he did an, it was, it was almost phenomenal to watch him in action. He chased those coyotes away, took about twenty, thirty minutes, put him back in the house. That was it. That's the most we've ever let him out at a time. So I would love to utilize him more, so if I could use him at night, that would be awesome, but I don't. So I think his barking is more than reasonable. That's what I have to say.
Hi, my name's Gray Wicker. Um, I did a little reading about the state statute, which I believe is relevant in this case, because it supersedes any municipal ordinances. If you're talking about a working dog, a registered working dog, it is not subject to municipal, municipal ordinances about barking, as long as it's on the owner's property, and it is in the process of defending livestock, poultry, or crops. So I don't know where the sixty minute limit comes in, maybe that applies to dogs other than registered working dogs. But the town really has nothing to say about registered working dogs, and my reading of the state statute was that there's no training requirement. It's that it's registered as a working dog, which I believe is the case.
And Great Pyrenees are bred for that purpose. They don't need training, you don't have to do anything.
Well, but I guess my point is, that's honestly neither here nor there. You have fulfilled the requirements of the state statute, which means that's kind of, that's it, right there. That's what the state says. So I'm just offering up kind of a black and white view of the scenario. Thank you.
Is this, um, one second, if this from Vermont League of Cities and Towns, is this a state statute?
They took it from, and you've got the state statute, everything he just said, we've got in your package.
Gotcha. Because yes, it says that, um, a working farm dog means that it's bred or trained to her to protect livestock, the poultry, or to protect crops, and that is used for those purposes, and that is registered as a working farm dog. That's what the state statute says.
That is correct, thank you.
Actually, I want, can you know this Tom first?
Oh, no. Um, I'm Chris's neighbor, and I've dealt with people that lived in the residence before, um, Chris and Merrick did. I've listened to donkeys, rain, in the middle of the. I've listened to donkeys ringing in the middle of the night, listened to guinea hens. It's part of, uh, what is living in Vermont. As a former dairy farmer, now small beef breeder and hay producer, I've had, um, Australian shepherds in the past. They are herding dogs, but they are also guardian dogs. And as Chris said, they're there for a purpose. Um, if you want to continue this sense of agriculture in Vermont, this is gonna be part of it. This is not an excessive barking dog. I have had no problems with that. But in reading your new ordinance, I also, uh, going back to when I was on the board thirty years ago, you know, put a lot of weight into the VLCT recommendations. So under their model dog control ordinance, there is, under section four, uh, B, exemption for working dogs, which I see is missing from the Wallingford ordinance. And as a person...
No, it's, it's in the ordinance, yes.
It's the one I saw on... Whoa, you are correct. I'm, the one I read.
There's two online.
There are two online, I read the wrong one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. So I just, I think it's an important piece and it's a valuable asset to people in all forms.
My name is Sarah Wicker and I live on Hartsborough Road. And I have a dog that is not a registered working dog. But I have to say that we also have livestock. And I mean, it's kind of, I would like to echo what was just said here, which is, you know, we all try, we have a great neighborhood and we try to be considerate of each other. But there's an understanding in the night that if people see that there's coyotes, especially, uh, there's other pests, but mostly coyotes, people want their dogs to bark at them. Actually, that's a, in fact, if we have a problem predator in our neighborhood, there's discussion and there's an agreement that we'll let the dogs out to chase them off. And we do that for two reasons. One is because we don't want them to kill our livestock. And we also do it out of humanity for the coyotes. Because if the coyotes are chased back by the dogs, they don't come back. They don't, they stay up in the forest, they stay free of the homestead. Everybody in the neighborhood benefits from having predators chased off our property. And not just us. I mean, our neighbor's cat doesn't get eaten, our neighbor's sheep. So there's just an understanding that if you get up in the night and there's coyotes that are right close by, that it's, it's kind of the responsible thing to do, actually, assuming you have good dogs that, you know, recall, to let them out to chase them off. And I think that's a great tool. It's much more humane than traps. It's much more safe than shooting at things in the middle of the night, which is the other option. Well, this is what happens. So, I mean, I'm just telling you, that's what's gonna happen. There's only so many ways you can get rid of predators at night. So, um, I think it would be crazy to not let people use that tool, you know, with incense.
That's why we have the ordinance.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue?
We, I'm sorry about that.
Sure.
Could generally, um, I'm still, but I think the real issue is going to be what is it acting as a working dog? Because coming down on my land, walking around the fields, it's not a working dog. So, you know, in that, in that sense, I mean, we can debate whether or not Vermont's an agri society, whether or not I can work with dogs. But when the dog is not acting as a working dog, then I think something needs to be done. That's why I'm more than willing to work through it with animal control. Maybe everybody else isn't. And if they're not, then eventually someone will define what the terms mean. Won't be us, won't be me, won't be you. But, you know, that's, I, I'm more than willing to work. If everybody else doesn't want to work, well then that's the way it will come. I do.
I agree with the Wood drop city too. Um, it's both, actually, I've thought of you several times. Working dogs are fine. I think they're needed for the purpose that they have a job for. But my concern is this also a thing where normal residents deserve their piece in twinkley too. If the dog is off the property, barking at cars, chasing cars occasionally, not just yours, but others that I know do the same, where's the fine line between working at that moment versus causing a nuisance? And I have to toe that line very carefully and just ask that you control it as best that you can and watch the difference of him working the fields or chasing cows down the road.
Or deer out of our meadow. I mean, some people want the nature and wildlife and that balance. I've worked hard to preserve and herd and make it not to have it overrun by somebody else's life. I mean, I think everybody in Vermont does a thing. We should be able to do what we want to do. But when it creeps into somebody else's home and bedroom and kitchen and you set down a grill implement or you come out onto your porch to watch the stars, it becomes too much and it's not really seeing the real threat.
Excuse me, can you speak your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Blumer. Yeah, sorry. So, I mean, I, it could, I will say, we have talked about it, you know, respectfully, and it is way better. But for two to three years, um, like I said, an owl would hoot and it was a beautiful thing during the night and it would erupt. Or it was seeing that, but I saw it as, you know, Vermont beauty and nighttime in Vermont. Uh, if it was once in a blue moon, absolutely, you know, get those predators out of there. Or, you know, but if it could be, we have to kind of look at like it needs a focus rather than just whole ecosystem and, you know, I don't know. Okay. It's a little overwhelming. It's quite, quite a noise. It echoes our Vermont air at night is still and quiet and slow things like a harmit thrush being trounced out every night, like, you know, that, that's Vermont. It's that balance between agriculture and boy, I think agriculture normally comes first, but it has to something, yeah. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, the state statute is very specific. The exemption only implies that the animal is on their own property. Animals off their, on a public road or on somebody else's property, there is no exemption. So it's, it's very clear.
Could someone tell me if Vermont is a right to farm state? Or whether Wallingford has adopted a right to farm?
What is it?
Right to farm.
Oh, oh, it's protected everywhere.
Yeah.
For agricultural uses and forest uses, you can't be denied anywhere in the state.
Right. That's my concern, that, uh, farms need, some farms need working dogs. And we have to respect that. And, uh, unfortunately, it's Vermont. It's, should be full of farms. We want to support them for sustainability, so...
Well, I think our ordinance does have the exemption for working dogs in it. I think also that point made, that the statute is very clear, that if the dog is not on the property anymore, it's no longer under that exemption. So that's...
Fair enough.
And it sounds like we have a working understanding going on. And we'll see how this ordinance is applied and we will move on from there. Did anyone else have anything else you wanted to say about this issue?
So I just have, I just want to clarify. So it says that it will not prohibit or regulate the barking or running, or running at large, which means off the property, of a working farm dog.
When he's chasing coyotes, I mark, I'm the dad of the dog. So it's a big beauty to watch our dog who's mostly in the garage sleeping ninety percent of the day because he does. When he's chasing a coyote, you can hear him run for miles, moving the coyotes in large areas. It's a, it's a beautiful thing to, to experience. I would like to go over some night with coyotes barking or yelling. But he doesn't, he doesn't ever just go anywhere unless it's for a reason that he's on alert. He doesn't, he doesn't, oh, he doesn't get up unless he thinks there's a reason. He doesn't just go running around in the yard and bark, ever. And he doesn't go on the road, really.
I believe that's also covered by the state statute, that if they are actively in pursuit of a predator. So...
And you can retrieve your dog if it goes in, to posted lane, do you get your...
You have to call it back.
You have to call it back.
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
I just want, I'm Shannon, maybe, we are property holders, Chris and Mark's.
Yeah, what was your last name?
Uh, maybe, a maybe, E Y. And we just, we happen to really appreciate Hughie because he, we also have some farm animals. And whenever we hear the coyotes, my kids will say, but Mom, coyotes are out there. And I can, I can hear Hughie sometimes and I'll say, it's all right, Hughie's got it. And the kids are like, okay. And then he does, he doesn't bark. It's not all night, it's very rare that we even hear him. And we're, I want to say maybe your second closest neighbor as the crow flies, but he would take the road a little further. But our woods are back up right here. And we definitely don't have a problem. He never has chased my car. He's great with my children. He is just a lovely...
He is a good dog.
He's a good boy.
He's a good dog.
Yeah.
Well, thank you everyone for your input on this. We've learned a lot about working dogs and our new animal ordinance this evening. And I think we will see how things proceed from here. Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cookies next time, Eric. Good night, John.
Okay, we're moving on to investment options for the bridge fund. And so Julie, you have some CD investment options for us.
So, so I got rates.
Can you focus? Sign in.
At the bottom of the investment report.
Thank you, you can just take, don't, over there, thank you. I signed you in, David.
Okay.
At the bottom of the investment report, I got rates from the core banks for six months and twelve months. And this was for the bridge reserve fund.
Julie, maybe we can shut the door?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Four months, Julie?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the six months is higher than the twelve month because rates, we expect rates to go down, so... These are all, they all have branches in Montle. I told them that it was just gonna be the CD, no other accounts. The only requirement with Bar Harbor, they require a business account with just a minimum balance of a hundred dollars. So those are our options.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do that? Then just take that bridge reserve fund and put it in a CD for six months? It seems like a good idea. Because we're not, like, we're not touching that money for a while, yeah.
So if we went with Berkshire Bank, that's at a four point one five rate? Interest rate would be your best option. That's the way it looks. We could do it for six months and then proceed from there.
Yeah. Roll it over, see where interest rates are and...
Yeah.
Do you have any plans for the building reserve fund? Do we have any plans for the building reserve fund right now?
Six months, within six months.
Well, it depends on what you're wearing upstairs, like heat pumps coming out.
The heat pump. So we might have something going on with that.
And the solar panels, maybe? The solar panels at the DPW.
Are the solar panels coming out of the building project? So I'm not sure we want to do anything with that right now.
Yeah.
You might want to keep that number three. So what are we thinking about which funds?
Certainly the bridge reserve fund. It, it seems like a slam dunk to put that in a six month CD because we know we're not gonna touch that money for any six months.
And then the sweep account is, that's just, uh, that's just the money that's swept out of the general fund interest. Then I think it would be the, the bridge reserve fund that we would...
Right.
Use for that. I don't really see any other than we would.
Yeah, I mean...
Right?
You know... I don't know, we probably want these insured, like, invested in a bank where it's FDIC insured, how it would...
Yes, I see.
Very good. You know, just like a money market account or something like that. You could probably, you could move money in and out of there very easily, but they're probably not covered by FDIC insurance.
I don't think they are.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, but, but let's do that then. And it's also good to bring in our bank into the fold.
So Julie, I think we have consensus to, um, do a six month CD for the bridge reserve fund. And to do it with Berkshire.
Very good.
Great. Thank you very much, Julie.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are on to Wallingford Day request. Police coverage of road closure.
So we did have, I just looked it up real quick, the, um, solar is coming out of the asset fund.
Oh, the solar's coming out of the asset fund?
Not the building fund. But if there's an overage, that'll come out of the building fund.
Yeah, if there's an overage, we come out of the building fund. Okay. So the police coverage, road closure, Heather Johnson has requested the town director sheriff to cover the Meadow Street road closure from two to ten PM. In the past, Wallingford Day volunteers have been posted at the road closure. So what would we like to do? Sheriff Fossett has asked if we wanted a deputy, do we want him to bill the town's contract?
We just have a deputy available. So they do have a deputy available.
What would that be?
Someone to, um...
Eight hours, what was the hourly rate?
Fifty-four.
In the fifties. They, it's twenty-four hours a week, so he would just take it out of the twenty-four hours.
One suggestion I was thinking of was, um, if we sort of split the difference. If two to six could be Wallingford Day run and then from six to ten could be the sheriff. That way, when there was the most traffic and the most likelihood of having to have firmer, um, leadership there, you'd have the sheriff down there. But then during that two to six time, you could sort of manage the, the road closure yourselves. I think there's vests and I know there's like cones, I think, or something we can do.
There's signs down in the town garage too.
Okay.
They say road closed barriers, jersey barriers, plastic barriers you could have to put up.
Okay.
They'd have to literally drive through them to get through it.
When I spoke to the sheriff's office, they had recommended something similar where they were like, we could just like pass by on our regular, um, route that we're already doing for Wallingford on that day during the two to six period if you want. And then we would pay them for, for the...
Yeah, we've also thought about it where if you guys do four hours from the towns, then we would pay for the other four hours for him to go there.
Okay.
So then he's still there from two to ten.
And you're good with the money aspect of that?
Yeah.
It's, it's fifty-four an hour, Anne.
Fifty-four an hour.
That seems reasonable to me.
So are we good with that?
We'd be on the hook for, the town would be on the hook for six to ten.
Yes, and then you would cover the two to six. And if you wanted to get the sheriff to do it for you, you could do that option as well. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
I think it's okay.
Okay. Sounds good to us?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then, let's see, what's next? Fire, uh, do you have anything else on that item, on the Meadow Street closure?
No.
No. Okay, we're on to fireworks.
Could I just make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. You must be crawling to the finish line about now. But it's, it's a wonderful investment and we really appreciate what you do.
Yes, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The town thanks you. We, it's, uh, we love this event. We, it's, we love this event, so thank you for continuing it.
It's coming together, and it's only going to get bigger and bigger.
Okay. So fireworks permit revisions. We have a fireworks display permit for our review. And there is a new language, would you like me to read the new language of the permit? Other terms and conditions. Fireworks displays shall be less than 30 minutes in duration and are prohibited after 10:00 p.m. The person in charge, noted above, shall be, shall provide public notice of the fireworks display as follows. Post a notice on the village post office bulletin board one week before the event with the location, time, and date of the fireworks display. Post on item in the local newspaper, Rutland Herald, one week before. Post items on Wallingford Front Porch Forum, FPF, one week before and one day before. Contact town admin at wallingfordvmont.com for assistance if you're not an FPF member. Post a notice in the municipal newsletter, deadline is 23rd of each month. Contact the Wallingford Town Clerk or email townclerk@wallingford.com. The Wallingford Select Board will not issue a permit when a state or local ban on outside burning is in effect. A permit that has been approved prior to a burn ban shall be suspended. Weekday permits will only be issued in case-by-case basis with select board preference for weekend events. The only thing I would say this, is I don't know if we want to do, instead of less than 30 minutes, put in 30 minutes or less. It's a minor thing. That way, if, if a show is 30 minutes.
Is that a private, public shows or just private shows? Like, if the town puts one on versus, I want for my family weekend party. So that seems like a pretty major difference. Like, are you saying Wallingford Day can't go 40 minutes?
Well, that's what I was wondering with this.
Yeah, and last year, it felt like it was a lot longer.
Just seems like a municipal thing is different than a private.
Do we want to put something in to address that?
Where'd that 30 minutes come from?
We're going over the fireworks display.
Right.
And in the new, um, one that we have written up, it says fireworks display shall be less than 30 minutes. Do we want to put something in that, um, how did you word it, David? Does it a public show?
Public or municipal event is different than a private event.
You could put in something like, um.
Yeah.
You know. That a select board approval needed for, you know, we could figure out language that says.
Yeah, I would think.
Select board approval for, you know.
Yeah, or you could say, you know, for private events, 30 minutes or less.
And then standards.
Talking about that.
Why not?
I mean, theirs isn't. This year is, it has no effect on yours this year, yours has already been issued.
Right. It doesn't affect your event this year.
Okay. Okay, I was like.
No, it doesn't affect.
No, yours is already.
Like, we missed the 23rd deadline.
No, you're, you're, this is for future. Yours has already been issued.
Yes, this is, this is, um, yes, this is not in effect yet.
All right.
Yeah, we think that that language should be amended to allow for towns to, the town to run something longer.
At least the duration of the fireworks show, you know.
Exactly.
Quote it as one show.
Yeah.
Do so.
Leave it as a duration.
Something that.
How can you put timeline on there, something that's long.
That maybe a private event is less than 30 minutes, but the town fireworks display can be longer.
No. Professional, professional like display.
A professional.
No, because they're all, I mean, you're only going to give them professional displays anyways.
Yes, we're not, not going to give permission to not, not professional.
I mean, you could, you could just put a town-sponsored event.
A town-sponsored event.
Would have, you know, would have.
They normally.
It'd be a longer time.
I think they're, it's a lot something longer, yeah, I mean, if they space it out well. I think Wallingford Days have done longer than 30 minutes.
Last year, it was exactly 30 minutes. I just looked at my pictures, it started at 9:04 p.m. and ended at 9:34.
Yeah, I was thinking that it is actually, that it is about a half hour, but. I think to say less than 30 minutes might be a mistake.
It's whatever you want. Any of the language can be amended, added, deleted, whatever you like.
That's a good point. We can always change in the future.
I think the time limit should be the same for private as well as the town of Wallingford. If we're going to, if we're going to limit fireworks, 30 minutes doesn't make any difference, who's doing it?
I would disagree, I think the town one should be longer, it's just hundreds of people as opposed to like 10.
Half an hour is a long time.
How do you justify for a malfunction in, you know, something they're doing? And it may take them 10 minutes to reset off, you know, it's, give or take, a few minutes isn't going to hurt anybody.
We could just bump it up to 45 minutes or something.
Well, if we're going to make it an hour, then it's private people, too.
I mean, this got, this was brought about because of the, this is brought about because of the issues on that Thursday night event.
Right.
People were upset about it, they didn't feel like there was notice.
Yeah.
They also thought it started and stopped for a long time, and then it stopped for a period, and then it started up again. So this is what you folks have been discussing since the complaints that night.
Well, I think, I mean, we could just make the timeframe, I don't know where the 30 minutes came from, if that was something we got from a, like a.
I think that, I think we've looked on other towns.
Yeah.
I think it was discussed in one of your meetings.
Yeah.
These are all just kind of ideas that were thrown around.
Right, right, that's what I was thinking.
So we can eliminate the timeframe altogether, if you want, and just say.
No, I think the timeframe is a good idea.
Yes, I do, too.
But the 30, like I said, I think we got 30 minutes from looking at other towns, so maybe we just bump it up to 45, and that would.
For both town and private.
Are we good with that?
So the timeframe is the only thing, is there anything else in there that you like or don't like? Or what about the notices, do you think those are, you know, too strict, not strict enough?
Can I ask about, can you repeat the notices part?
Yes, so the notices part, let me see where that starts. There we go. The person in charge shall provide public notice of the fireworks display as follows. Post a notice on the village post office bulletin board one week before the event with the location, time, and date of the fireworks display. Post an item in the local newspaper, Rutland Herald, one week before.
Doesn't that cost money?
You can do it for you.
You can? Post an item on Wallingford Front Porch Forum, one week before and one day before. Post a notice in the municipal newsletter. And the reason why we put those in about posting notices is that there was, um, there was a fireworks display that got approved that people didn't know about. And it happened during the week, and it was quite upsetting to quite a few residents in town. So we're thinking if, if it's noticed, then if we say that in order to do this, you have to put notice for it.
I can see that for like a public event, but for a private event, posting it in the Rutland Herald, would you really want people coming to your house to see it? No, it's not, it's not to invite people, it's so that people know that they, you know, their dogs are afraid or.
It's going to be noise.
Just to alert people, it's not to invite them to watch it, it's to alert neighbors and surrounding that there's going to be.
You could probably keep it like, there will be, um.
A private around.
There'll be a private event with fireworks in Wallingford at this time and day.
Yeah, I mean, if we have it in the Wallingford Standard and Front Porch Forum, and then posted around, do we need Rutland Herald as well?
It's up to us.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
I would think that maybe we'd want it for, say, Wallingford Day, to post it in the Herald.
Because then it's like an advertisement.
Yeah, that people know, but maybe we leave out the Rutland Herald for the private event.
Yeah, I think.
What do we think?
The, just to.
The other.
A lot of people will know that there's fireworks on Wallingford Day. That's, but it was the Thursday event that people didn't know about.
It's a Thursday event.
So maybe the fire, the private events are the ones that need to be in the, in the more noticed.
That's, that's a point.
I think DMB also has a requirement where before they start, 10 minutes before they start, they, they send up one big boom.
Yeah.
So you know, I'll get your dogs in, or whatever you're going to do.
I think a lot of fireworks displays do that anyways. They do 10 minutes before, they do this, and you know that fireworks are coming. But if you weren't expecting it, you wouldn't know that that's what that was.
Right.
So, uh, shall we keep the notices the same?
I'm fine with that, just was raising the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we'll keep the notices the same, we'll work on the language on the, um, on the time. Anything else on fireworks displays?
Are you happy with 45 minutes?
Are we good with 45 minutes?
You're good with 45, Ann?
45 minutes.
45 minutes or less.
Or less, right.
Yeah.
And that sort of covers all of it. Thank you for everybody's input on that. Okay. We are on to school street sidewalk supplemental funding request. Okay. The town with our approval will be pursuing supplemental funding to the state's bike head program for the school street sidewalks. Rutland Region Planning Commission's Stephanie Bork, who is the town's project manager, has included drafts, draft submission and email explanation. The funding request requires a letter of support from the select board indicating the town is responsible for the 20% local match and future maintenance of the sidewalks. And you can see from the calculations, the local match is nearly double with this new funding. Do we support seeking additional funding and signing the closed letter? Yes.
Um, I have a clarification. I was on the ARPA committee, and at our first meeting, we were told that X amount came to the town from the American Rescue Plan, and half of it was going to be reserved for the school street sidewalks. I thought that was in the vicinity of 600,000. Am I wrong? The sidewalk project?
Yeah.
ARPA money, the, the pot that came to the town, the select board reserved an amount to go towards the sidewalks.
The 20%, the initial 20% was the local match, that's what was reserved from the ARPA. But as we got deeper into the project, you could see really soon, early on, it was going to go way over budget. So there was this, this general consensus that any, any leftover ARPA money would, should probably go to the, the sidewalks, but there was never a, you know, it was just that original 20% or 20, 25% I think.
And actually, the original sidewalk project, we cut down because we saw how much over budget it was going to go. So we were originally going to go farther up School Street.
Yeah.
Um, but we've cut that out.
Astor's and Justin's house, way up, all the way around that bend.
Right, but that's been cut back because of the overrun.
Yeah. Could get cut back further, depending on what, the bits go out eventually.
Yeah, we'll have to see.
And so in terms of the, then the excess ARPA money, I know we've talked about like that cybersecurity audit that didn't happen.
Right.
Do we have anything, I can't remember if there's anything else that was sitting around unspent.
Say that one more time.
I don't, I can't remember what else from the ARPA was sitting around that was unspent. We, I think there was like 26,000 that was supposed to go to a cybersecurity audit that we didn't do.
There, there was other money as well. Can't tell you exactly, I think Sandy's looking that up right now.
Yeah, I know she is. Working on it. Maybe we can absorb.
I think that.
I don't remember anything else that stuck in my head that was left over.
So do we want to move forward with the application for additional funding?
I think.
I know. I'm thinking we go for it.
Yeah, I think so.
Because it'll go up again. That's the problem.
It's not going to come down.
This is just a teaser.
So Sandy, do we need a motion for this one, or can we do?
I would, I think to, I would just because it's a.
So to have a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll authorize you, uh, we'll authorize you to sign a letter.
I think we should have a motion for this.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay, so your motion is?
Yes.
To operate.
That you, you sign the letter and send it.
Okay. And send the application for the additional funds. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move ahead with the application. Great.
We're done now, Greg.
Okay, or do we need to do number 13?
Resignation.
What's number 13?
The resignations. Okay. So, Shannon Pitlick has submitted an enclosed resignation, do we accept it?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
If we don't, is she forced to stay on the committee forever?
I think, I think we have to accept it, but we will definitely thank her. And I would like to take a moment right now to just recognize how much Shannon has done for the recreation in our community, and how thankful we are for her contribution.
Okay.
Okay. So we sadly accept her resignation. Joyce Barbary has requested her name be removed as development review board alternate. Do we accept her resignation?
Yes.
And a letter will go out to Joyce as well?
Yes. How do we recruit for vacancies, not just on these, but these are immediate?
I think we post it.
We post it, yep, it's, it's in the newsletter each month.
It can be put in Front Porch Forum.
Yeah, put it on the website.
Yep. So now, we are, need a motion, I guess I can make the motion, to enter executive session as allowed under 1 VSA 313A3, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Are we doing the first one?
Oh, and let me say that one. Under one, I skipped that one completely. One, VSA section 3134A, um, which is, um, members, um, so it's members for disciplinary or dismissal action against a public officer or employee.
I'll second that.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.